The record, we've got Patrick Carrier, Liz Sanford, Bobby Canto, Ina St. James, myself Shannon Rutherford, and Garrett Daigle in attendance this evening. The rest of the commission members had other conflicts this evening.
Oh, here's Matt.
Wagner is here.
It's okay, you're fine.
Matthew Vandalsburg can't make it tonight.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the confirmation. All right, well, one Matt out, the other Matt in. It's all good.
We at least got a Matt.
So we got a quorum for Matts.
Quorum for Matts, that's important. So we were just doing, just some talking in general as everybody was filing in. And just Bobby and Ina had some interesting info on rental costs. And so we were just talking like average rents for one bedroom and two bedrooms. And it's roughly, say, on average, $2,000, so $24,000 for a year. So if you're going to do that whole, your rent shouldn't exceed, or your housing cost shouldn't exceed the 30%. You're at $80,000 a year for annual salary in order to cover an average one-bedroom rent in Connecticut. So it just kind of, as with the rest of the conversation, was highlighting the needs of what we're looking to try to accomplish. So I have added a few things to the SharePoint site. I'm going to go to our, maybe, that's okay.
I'll take yours.
But Garrett and I chipped away at some of the action items just from last Wednesday. So it's been, was it five days since we were all together? We, Garrett has looked into some of the building permit fees and trying to find some of more information on linkage fees. The other action item was to start to take a look at Fairfield Housing Trust Fund Ordinance. I have not done that as of yet. Second, third item was to start outline on inclusionary zoning regulation. I might delay that for a little bit. I'll explain a little bit more in a second as to why. And fourth was to advance developer panel discussions. I'm going to jump in with, on that end. And then we'll, then we'll go to the building permit fees and linkage fees, and I'll hand it over to Garrett for that. For development panel, I talked to John Carrier this morning. I had to talk to him on a few things. And so what I asked him to do, he is going to check in with some of his colleagues at the CT Home Builders Association and see if anyone is interested and available to come join us for a panel discussion. I explained loosely what we're looking for and put a timeframe roughly of early September, early to mid-September. I left a message for Jeff Sager. I have not heard back from him as of yet. I can poke at him again through the week if I don't hear from him. And then I spoke with Andrea Gomes at Hinckley Allen Snyder. Andrea and Tim Hollister were the permitting attorneys for Jeff Sager for 80 South Road. And interestingly, Andrea let me know that they just finished a 50-state study for the National Association of Home Builders specifically regarding incentive zoning or inclusionary zoning. It's a policy and practical and, policy, practical, and legal challenges to inclusionary zoning, a resource manual for National Association of Home Builders members. So that is tucked in on the main directory. So there's the email from Andrea today, which just has the link to their website. I don't know that I want to like working on this. Let me see some PDFs. And then here's the document. It is, I'd say 100 pages or so. And it does go through all 50 states. I printed a hard copy for myself. I'm happy to print hard copies for everyone else. It's available there as PDF, so you can download it. It's just a PDF. So it's got Andrea's email with the link, which brings you to Hinckley Allen's website with the link then for here, but it also has a synopsis. And then the PDF is uploaded. But I wanted a copy because I wanted to be able to have it with me and highlight it and do whatever and not necessarily have to have it on a computer. If anybody else wants a PDF of it, I'm happy to do so, and I can bring it Monday to the meeting for anybody that wants a hard copy of it to start to.
I'm not going to be here Monday.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Is it to you in what country?
Well, some people call it California.
Oh.
I personally am staying in the US.
You do want a hard copy?
Mine is okay for me.
Yeah, I do.
Right now? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Like you, I like to be alone.
I just want to pull it over, and I just, I know it's easier because I do it like bedtime reading and whatever, and I don't have the computer up there. I'm weird. I have weird bedtime reading, a whole other thing that we're not going into. But anyhow.
Have you glanced at it yet?
Really cursory because I was just talking to her at the end of the day, and I was looking at a couple of other things as well that I dove into a little more. What she told me and what we've heard before is it really highlights some of the challenges with inclusionary zoning. So it goes through a whole bunch of information with respect to defining applicability, eligibility, and selection. And then it does towards the end kind of compare and contrast with some of the regulations that they have come up with, or they found they didn't come up with. And it also made reference to some case law and other discussions. So it seems to be an interesting kind of at-a-glance summary for us. So, but now I haven't had a chance to really dive into it with any detail. She is interested in participating in a panel, however, she's due with her second child in September. So she said depending on the actual date, she said it certainly won't be the end of September because if I haven't had this child yet, it'll be a problem because as she said, she feels like she's been pregnant for four years. Any of us that have done it can relate. So, at any rate, so, but she was going to talk to Tim, and there's another gentleman from her office, Scott McNeil, that may be interested and available to sit and discuss with us pros, cons, what works, and for their perspective, why some of the developers that they work with choose to not go with an inclusionary zone, like they still come in with an 8-30G. Why isn't their inclusionary zone working with that mechanism? I had a few other questions for her about the fee and lieu as well, just as, so she's going to check in with Tim on those. So I should hear back from her probably in a few days, and then we'll go from there. So with that too, and I know we haven't come up, it seems to be pretty solid on the needs end of things, but just a reminder that Hinckley Allen put together a pretty detailed needs assessment when they did their application for 80 South Road. Bobby, you don't have a copy of that, but I can get you it electronically so that that's available to you. But again, it's.
Came in with 80 South Road.
Yeah, came in with 80 South Road, yep.
Remember that?
Yeah, that was a good one.
It was kind of eye-opening.
So, yeah, they had two documents, right? They had two binders that they submitted. So one was the binder of the application and traffic and drainage and architecture and site plans. And then there was this that was the needs assessment. So, so that's, it's just a good reference. Like I said, we're not, this group isn't struggling with understanding the needs, but it points to some solid specifics, particularly if we start to get to a point where we're in public hearings and people questioning, you know, why do we even, why are we even talking about this type of thing?
Yeah, and you brought up the free and reduced lunch at the school last week as well, right?
Right.
It's kind of part of the.
Right.
Already looked at it too.
Exactly, yeah. So just, yeah, kind of highlights that. There's, this, we looked at last week, it's just showing, it got, either I forgot to add it in or it got moved. It's just the linkage, it's the email that Garrett had done with the discussion on linkage fees and explanation on linkage fees. So I popped that back in. And then Andrea had sent, I had reached out to Andrea at the end of 2022, and she sent a link on incentive housing in National Home Builders. Oh, here it is down here. So this is incentive housing zones. Garrett, can I make this bigger? So incentive housing zones and similar regulations. So not, so there's inclusionary zones that can be the entire town, right? All that we're going to hit, every residential zone and whether it's single-family or multifamily or whatever comes through. This, the ECS is Partnership for Strong Communities in Connecticut. Put together a listing of all the communities in Connecticut that have some type of incentive housing or inclusionary zone. And it talks, it runs through each of them from Avon to Wocat or Winston, whatever here is at the end. If you use the link from Andrea's email, which is the top, you, the links in here where it says click here are active. So it's, you use the link in Andrea's email, that brings you to the Partnership for Strong Communities website. This page pops up, and then all of those links are live and will bring you to each regulation. All right, when I did the PDF, I can't get it to do, I can't get that link to be live. It's probably a Shannon error. But that's kind of what I was tinkering with towards the end of the day today and looking at different regulations. And what I'm looking like is whether it's Avon or Canton or wherever, it is not a town-wide, there's a handful, Sanford I think is citywide, Mansfield or Tolland, townwide? Do you know? Townwide, many of the ones listed here are sections of the community. So similar to like a transit-oriented development zone, right? So like New Britain has and some others. So it's not a community-wide regulation that was put in place. It's for a limited geographic section of the community. There's a handful that are community-wide. We can go through this and try to figure that out, get that into a spreadsheet that are, but I think, I think most of them are geographic regions in the community, and there's a handful that are the, in communities in totality. So that's another resource and another easy, something to look at. And again, you, it clicks, and when you click on it, it brings you right to the regulation. So again, as you're looking at things, if there's something that pops out on a regulation or particular point of a regulation that makes sense or you think you like, then that's obviously something that we can, can consider.
For next meeting, we should probably look through some of these things that you mentioned.
Or at least start to provide Garrett and I some thoughts on what you think you'd like to see. Then we can start to kick some stuff around. So, you know, through August, we can share a few things. My thought, I got, looking at the town. The, for dates in September, if we were going to try and squeeze in another work session, and I can just, I'll do an email, but just so, I don't know if everybody knows this whole meeting calendar on the main page of the town website, but starts to, will then So I was looking, we meet on the 11th. Was thinking of either the 13th or 14th. That would be September. I don't know if 14th, I don't know, am I hitting Rosashana or Yom Kippur?
UIP.
Rosashana is the 16th.
Okay.
Yom Kippur is the 25th.
Okay. Which explains why this all got pushed, that's, our 25th we got pushed. So otherwise, we're, Architectural Design New Review would likely be canceled. I haven't had anything come in yet. We could do the 19th later or the 21st. So I'll put a few dates out, but I want to try to get a date lined out so that we can get, see what everyone hears availability and then give the speakers or panelists an option for at least two dates.
Earlier, right? You want the speakers in September?
I'd like to do them in September, yeah. Because again, right, once I'm back to, I'd like to do it at least under the umbrella of the moratorium. I don't know that we'll have final regulation changes and all that, but at least it's getting, continuing with the momentum of what we've done through the summer and doing, because again, I don't think we're going to get extra meetings in October because the full campaign season starts October 1st. So I wasn't going to try and get extra meetings. Well, I just, I don't think it's going to be realistic timeframe, time-wise for folks to carve out even more additional time. So, so that's what I was thinking is.
What?
Time, and I'm thinking the earlier in September is possible, and then if we can get Andrea, then great. And I told her, and when I was speaking with, with John Carrier, that, you know, we'd prefer folks here, they have this conversation, but if for whatever reason, you know, somebody's coming from a far corner of the state or whatever the circumstance is, that, you know, they certainly can zoom in. We can have this conversation and facilitate it and still have a decent dialogue, I think, via Zoom and accomplish everything that we would need to. So that's where that stands. So I've got some calls out. We'll see what we, what we get and interest levels. So it's also spurred some additional information, which was.
That's awesome. Yes. Timing, right?
Yeah, very timely. And apparently, they had done one back in, you'd been.
07.
07, and there's a reference to it in here. We haven't got our hands on it, and I don't know that it really warrants, you know, this is the current information. So I think we're just, there's enough things to read. We could chase our tails just reading documents, and I think we let the 07 ones stand unless there's a question, and then I can always get it to Andrea and get an answer. So that's kind of where that stands at this moment. We'll look, I'll get an email out to check availability for panel discussion. I'll probably do a doodle poll again. It seems to work, and it's an easy, when I need to go back to it. I don't think I have anything else on that at this point.
You have me on the doodle polls.
No, you're not because you came in after, and you just, I was like, here you go, here's the meetings. Jump in if you can jump in. So I will, it'll be a new email and a whole new doodle poll. So I'll make sure, yeah, that you're, you're in. So you're in my email chain, so that'll be easy. I don't think I'll, I'll forget, but.
Yeah. I'm reading today.
Mm-hmm.
At least it's here for you, like we don't have to dig through it because what has been happening to me is, I find, I've been scheduling time to review, and one link goes to the next. I was in Seymour, Ensignia Derby, Oxford. Now, you know what I mean? Then I'm like, what was I even looking for?
Oh, yeah.
So having this documented already.
Yeah. And then you're trying to remember, you're like, okay, how did I get here? Right, to back yourself back out and, right.
That's good.
So, yeah, and I think they, yes, C document will be helpful too for that at-a-glance. We'll see if we can get a chart done, easy, which is community-wide versus designated areas within the community. I'm sure we'll love to take that. You knew that was coming. So, and then if you want to jump in, we'll shift over to our linkage, building permit fees and linkage fees.
So as we discussed at the last meeting, we talked about linkage fees. There we go. Trying to figure out what kind of surrounding towns were charging for building permit fees based on Sanford's ordinance that they take 10% of the commercial building permit fees and throw into their affordable housing fund every year. We talked about that Farmington's not going to start doing that without having to increase the permit fee. So I looked at, Sandy helped me out in our office, and then I pulled together some other ones. So we got about eight, we'll say 18 towns, either directly abutting us or kind of in the area or similar to Farmington. And look at their building permit cost, and they're all over the place, I'll say that right now.
Yeah.
Right, I, some of them seem pretty high. I think Mansfield, that, I chose the higher for Mansfield. Mansfield's 2226, but that's only when the fire marshal review is required. If we're looking at commercial, the fire marshal review is probably required, so I went the higher. If it's not required, it's 15.25 per thousand. And the residential's lower, but they're all higher. But, so this is in the SharePoint I uploaded this afternoon, but what you can do, so I set up, so you can change these two yellow values. So estimated cost is the estimated cost of work, so that will change all of these. If you change the permit cost one, that just changes the Farmington one. So you can see if we, you know, if we go to 16.5, which is Sanford, it brings up Farmington's, and you can kind of see how that plays in relation to. I mean, it does seem like some of our neighboring communities are lower than us, since very Newington, Canton, and Burlington are directly above us, and they're all fairly low. I was surprised how low Burlington's was.
Yeah. Surprised how high Newington was.
Right. Yeah, I mean.
And the 26, Garrett, remember, so the 1426 and the 1026.
So every permit fee requires a 26 cent state fee per thousand. Some towns build it into the fee, so Farmington's is 15, flat, we take the 26 out, goes to state. Some towns just add it on. So, so I know, yeah.
That's our convenience thing.
Okay.
Yeah, so I know, like Plainville's permit says, I don't know, right, I think, and I think, it was Plainville, one of the towns, I don't remember which one it was, but it said, it broke down that first thousand charge, and it says it's $20 for the first thousand, it's $5 for administration fee for the permit, and it's 26 cents for the building permit to the state, the state education fee, is what it's called.
That's what Hartford, you just call it, just a tiny bit.
So West Hartford does not have a formula. They have a 356-page chart. And I tried a couple random ones, and it was all different ones.
Okay. There's a reason why.
So, yes, so West, I put the link in if you want to look, but, so, let's go down to a million.
But what are each of the columns?
Value.
Sorry.
No, no, no. It's estimated cost, building permit fee, the state's, no, I'm sorry. Estimated cost, so a thousand-dollar range. So if you're $1,001, you're bumped into this one. Then state fee, or the, the per fee, the state fee and the total.
Oh, okay, gotcha, 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 gotcha.
Yeah, so, so we'll look here.
First and last column. Sorry.
No, I should have.
No, all right, I just, I'm sorry, I should have asked that at the beginning.
No, I thought it was at the top of each page. Too much.
So obviously, there's some sort of percentage math behind that.
Yeah, I'm sure someone didn't type this all out, but they. I tried to call their office and go, so.
Looking at 17.
They're 17, 275, which is near the higher end of the fees.
17, 17 per thousand.
Yeah, I tried to make it so you could play around with estimated cost of that permit. I mean, obviously, you get, once you're past the first couple thousand, all the, all the ones that charge a minimum kind of balances out, but anyway. So if you want to, if you want to play around, see, you know, if we did 16.
And you're right, just for the math, for everyone, right, you increase it one, one in a, right, you increase that, you get an extra $100 in housing trust fund fee for every, for your $100,000 project, right?
Million, million.
$3 million. Every million dollars, we get $1,300.
$1,300.
So the year we spent a million dollars, we got a million dollars in building fees that equals X million of, so $100,000 would go into the, in addition, we're going to the trust fund.
Right, but that, so.
And just in that year, right?
Yeah, so that's not revenue, that's the estimated cost of work.
Correct, right, right.
So, so that million is, if we. Trying to think of an example.
So the building permits, we, we, the town generated a million dollars worth of building permit fees in '21, '22. So if we grow the permit cost 10%, right, that's 100,000 goes into the trust. Like, again, just some back of envelope math to just give everyone a sense of the volume of what we're talking about.
Is it legal though to do that? I thought I heard that, or somebody was saying that that's not, you can't do that, right? Like building apartments are supposed to base it on like what their costs are in order to facilitate.
So for the building permit fee itself, for the review of the plans and inspectors' time and, so yes, our fees, there is certain criteria for setting the fees, and the fees are in, are all lined out in the ordinance, and I can't remember what section of the ordinance. The linkage fee for the housing fee, and from what we've seen and what other communities are doing, I have not checked with Bob DeCrescenzo, I started to have the conversation with Andrea today to a little bit, that it can be a separate line item as part of the building fee.
Oh, it can?
Yeah, as part of the inclusionary zone, Connecticut, the general statute, which is H2I.
Yeah, I think that was it. H2I, H2BI, one of those.
Yeah. So H2I is allowed for the additional fee.
Something that you can just incorporate in course of business?
No, it'd be a town ordinance revision, so public hearing with the town council.
It would be part of our recommendation. Okay. Then we'll go to the town council, yeah.
So Sanford, as you talked about, just takes 10% of that building permit fee and moves it to housing trust fund. Fairfield has an extra $5 per thousand. So if we're at 15, that's a much bigger increase, that's an increase, I think, off the top of my head. New Canaan is 10 per thousand, so that's a pretty big increase over what we currently charge. I, that's all I could find as actually something that I could just grab. Um, Mansfield and their Affordable Housing Trust Fund ordinance mentions that the source of income can be from building permits, including housing fees, and, with a few things. Um, so I called Mansfield, but I didn't get a call back yet, uh, for the meeting, to try and find out if they've added anything, um, the building permit fees are a separate fee. Um, they do have, Mansfield has a whole calculation for the fee in lieu of, or the density bonus, that we talked about at the last meeting. Um, so they have their own fee calculation, so that is the main dri- main driver of the expansion of the trust fund. Um, they do have an affordable housing committee, um, trust fund committee, that, it's fairly new. They're supposed to publish a report every year of where the, where the funds came for the trust fund. My understanding, based on the availability of information on the Mansfield website, is that they haven't even been in effect for a full year, so they haven't done the report yet. Um, so that's why I was trying to call them and, and get an answer.
I, I'm just curious, like, your gut check, Patrick, like, hearing, like, town of Farmington possibly increasing, would that, like, stop you from doing the, I know it sounds horrible, but, would that stop you from, uh, doing business when a town does something like this? Or you just pass that on to your consumer?
I mean, you definitely pass it on, you know, um, I think it makes a difference in the end. It's not really for the developer, but for the market in general.
Okay.
Right. Um, but it's hard to say, you know, what, how much impact it would have. And I, it's, it's more on, you know, their costs, so you're trying to, obviously, you're trying to produce affordable housing, um, but then with every time the cost goes up, it just becomes less affordable, so it's like a, you know, it's finding that balance.
Yeah, right.
I, I know you have a beautiful project happening downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Those are some big numbers, but maybe because you have multiple, and then excuse, maybe somewhere, obviously, it makes sense. Right, but, okay.
Right, and this, I did set the value high, it was a million dollars, I mean, if, I, I don't know if you wanna give us, like, an est- a rough estimate of what you're, like you're seeing, then we can plug that in and see.
Uh, you know what, I, I'm, so I'm not, I don't, I'm not that familiar with that, I mean, yeah, 'cause Johnny's pretty much, you know, the one who's taking care of the per- the building permit itself.
Let's just do four hundred thousand, and I obviously dropped the, them down a lot, so now you're going from six thousand, six, it's six hundred dollars more on a four hundred thousand, and that's not the, the, the sole price of the home, that's the, that's a cost, that's a cost to build it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nine quarters, eighty-four. Hundred dollars for, like, one house, one really nice house.
Right, and that's that ten perc- or, yeah, ten percent increase from fifteen to sixteen fifty.
And this has been fifteen dollars in the town of Farmington for how long?
Late nineties.
Okay.
Late, mid-nineties.
Thirty years.
Twenty-five, thirty.
I'm not sure, I'm shocked, but, I mean, when you look, we're not that far out of the realm compared to everybody else.
No, and I can add more information if, if.
Like, I thought we were a lot underrated and lower, but I mean, I'm looking at Glastonbury at seventeen, I'm looking at Canton at fourteen.
Right.
You know, Burlington's a little oddball, but Bloomfield, A- Avon Ty, that's crazy, but, you know, Granby sixteen, so we're not that, fourteen, fif- twenty-six at Simsbury, so all our neighboring towns are right where we are.
Right.
It'll be interesting to see, though, when theirs were updated.
Right, I.
Even like Burlington, I, you know, even five years ago, the amount of, uh, construction in Burlington is so high now compared to, like, you know what I mean? So are these towns updated, or are they twenty, thirty years old?
This is what was current, that I could kind of, the website, some towns, yeah.
But they're currently charging, but when they last updated, I mean, Farmington hasn't done theirs in a while.
If you look at the total number, it's actually cheaper.
Right.
So, um, you know.
And that sometimes is just, we have a minimum permit.
Right, 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 right.
Either there's a minimum permit fee of fifty dollars, or it's fifty dollars for the first thousand, it ends up being the same.
Right, but, like, you know, 'cause that took me by a shock, I was like, fifty dollars, are you crazy? But then you look at the total number at the end, and it's actually a cheaper permit than, than we would.
Right.
So, you know, again, we're, we're not that far off.
I think Matt was gonna say the.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it, how, how complex it is, like, Avon or, or Berlin, where they have a split between the first one thousand, or the, the first three thousand, and then the thousand, and ours is just a flat rate, would that be, like, a challenge to, to implement if we decided to? Yeah, tier approach.
No, I, 'cause I think, uh, Stanford has a different permit if it's under a million or over a million.
Right.
So that, it, it's, it's just not currently set up that way, it's not overly difficult to implement, um, and, or to acquire some reformatting of our, of our online permitting system, 'cause we gotta redo all the fees.
Got it.
Um, 'cause now it's just a calculation of, if it's less than a million, it's as much, if it's more than a million, it's much.
Yep.
Um, as opposed to just being fifteen. Big price of a thousand, type of.
Yep. Okay.
Um.
And I'm assuming they're trying to, like, capture, you know, actually, so a lot of, may, I don't know what the permit ranges are, but there must be a lot of, like, we talked about toilets and roofs and all that, right?
Right.
So, you're capturing quite a bit more percentage-wise, you know, from, from those permits, I wonder what it looks like.
Right, right, we'd have to, we'd have to start to break down, and what's the, what's the new, or an expansion?
Yeah.
And volume, yeah.
Right, as opposed to just somebody coming in and doing an electrical permit.
Right, and there are some towns that do charge reinspection fees, I know Burlington's one of them. Um, if they have to come, if they go back for an inspection, you fail the inspection, they give you a list, you gotta pay again for them to come back out. Um, so maybe that, I can look more in depth at some of the lower ones, but that might be the case with some of them, is that, if we have to keep coming back out, you're getting charged directly, as opposed to just spreading out the cost through everyone. Um, if it would be helpful to better understand fees, um, I can add in some more information, like median income, mediums, uh, home prices in these municipalities, it's pretty easy to get that information and just put, add it to the table. Um, just give you some more information about how Farmington and the other towns compare to Farmington, um, to see where that, maybe a little more context for the per- for the permit fee. Like, I know Newington's mill rate is higher than Farmington, Farmington has a low mill rate.
Right.
Um, well, and I can do that pretty easily, too, that's not that, I think the state has, just has a list that I can just add them all in, and we can see what, well, what's the, the mill rate like, 'cause some towns try to fully, and can, right.
Are they trying to, right, all changing in July, right, anyway?
Hmm, yeah, you, yeah, yeah, I think they have to report them to O P M, so I should.
Just make sure the list is up to date, and, and I know you are. Um, um, that's good, I was just wondering, like, where, just like, for majority, and I don't know, I, I, I don't build, I'm not a contractor, like, I, I'm just talking out of, just make, uh, I guess, a reaction. For us in Farmington, like, are majority, just like, little projects, or do we get enough big projects? You don't wanna incentivize people, right, like, it just has to be done the right way.
Right, and I think we, we chat, right, the idea would be is that it's for new, new construction.
Yeah, additions.
And new ho- uh, so new homes.
Yeah.
New additions to home, like, a actual physical expansion to the home, whether it's a new second floor, or, um, or the footprint itself. And commercial, um, you know, the renov- whether it's new commercial expansion, or, and we'd have to take a look at, from a renovation standpoint on commercial, right, 'cause we talked about how fifteen Farm Springs, the Marriott is a renovation, they technically didn't change the footprint, change the height of the building, um, but clearly, that's something, that's an extensive renovation that would have to be captured, um.
So, like, a, to, to play off that, right, electrical outlets would still be the fifteen dollars per thousand, but for these four or five categories, it may be a different am- amount, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, and we'd have to figure out, yeah, and it might just be a separate, again, just bring it down as a separate line item.
I think that's what I was thinking about, like, tiers, maybe, like, like, yeah, fifteen per thousand for the first thousand, or whatever the first is, and then, yeah, if it's a home expansion, or a new home, or commercial, right, then this can be just a lot more fun to that, so then that's the, the, the project where, so I think it's the same, same concept, maybe we just get it the same way, okay?
Yeah, for some of the folks that are renovating office space, you know, and it's staying office to office, but they've got a new tenant in, yeah, we gotta be careful on, on that. Um, and at the same time, what we're seeing, right, so a dol- a dollar, a dollar fifty add to the, you know, it's gonna put a decent chunk over to the, reasonable chunk over to the housing, uh, trust fund, and is that, you know, we'll take a look at it and run a few what-if scenarios, and how, how cautious do we really need to, to be? Um, but, yeah, I can, uh.
I mean, like, the Marriott, I even brought up the Marriott, the Marriott's changed its footprint, but it changed its use.
It does change use, correct.
You know, where, like, you're talking to office space, you know, office space is office space, you get one tenant that comes in, it's still an office, are, are we really gonna penalize that for switching tenants?
Right, right, or re-tenanting vacancies, or whatever, satisfying new lease agreements for fit-outs and whatnot, so.
We can't be on each football. That's true. Okay, but, uh, yes, I can't wait to have something.
So, I can check in with Bob Di, make sure that we're solid on the linkage fee, um, like, you know, what we've seen in the other regulations, and just because, right, as we're seeing, just because somebody does it, doesn't mean that it's allowed, like, we, it, it's tied appropriately back to a statute, right? So we wanna make sure that whatever we do is appropriately tied back to a statute, um, so we can double-check that, I can see if there's anything.
Yeah, we'll read it, too.
New report that came in from Andrea, um, and then we would be taking a look, we'd have to start taking a look at the, uh, fee ordinance, would be the next thing. Does you have anything else, Garrett, that you would come up with, or looked at?
I think that's it for now, 'cause I talked to Selington, me and Steve, we'll talk about their ordinance.
Okay.
Showed that off.
Anybody have any other questions for us, or stuff they want us to look into?
Just wanted to mention fi- five things, one thing, so one of this crazy, like, go from link to link that I've seen across, and I, I will spend more time on it, is, um, so the towns that have an affordable housing plan, um, three of them said, alright, so we have a housing plan, and now what? Um, so the towns that kind of stood out, that they're taking the next step, looking at the regulations, I have no idea how they compare in size to, to us, but, read a bit online about Seymour, Antonia Derby, Oxford, and Norfolk.
So, they usually hit the central, right, the Nagatech.
Yeah, I figured you'd know that. What's our sister town, do you know?
Your town?
Yeah, there's always a town that mirrors you almost identical.
No idea.
Okay.
And another, eh, within the other Cog, or, or?
No, for example, like, like Farmington's twenty-six square miles, twenty thousand population, there's always a town that mirrors you very, very closely.
I haven't, I, I do not know.
Really?
Uh, yeah, I don't.
I'm just kidding.
Shannon.
Oh, no.
The only reason it clicks is, 'cause like, when I was looking, when I was looking at colleges for, for Julia, it came up, like, Clemson is the mirror school, or sister school to UConn, they mirror each other very similar based on, you know, population and all that, and I'm, I just wondered if it was the same with towns, like, I know.
Sure it is, I just, I, I don't.
We're number one, okay? We're the best, we're number one. There we go.
So, but that's, yeah, so that's the Nagatech Valley Cog.
But, I, I will dig some more, but like Seymour definitely stood out as, what do we do now, you know?
Yeah.
Do we need to change anything, and, uh, I'll report back, or I'll send you information, but I wanted to just say that it was nice to see that we're not the only ones, right?
I think a lot of communities have done the same, right, a, a lot of them probably went, I did my affordable housing plan, here you go, I checked the box.
Yes, yes.
If you had to.
And aren't even doing this. Well, they're ahead of us, obviously, have done other things, and that's, that's fine, too. Um, but I think, too, that's part of why Cog and Sustainable C T have joined forces, and we've got that separate working group with, ever, I don't know, there's like eight municipalities that are part of that, that we've been participating with to try to figure out, okay, you know, 'cause we weren't the only, we're like, here's your affordable housing plan, now what? Right, and so, and they know, they have heard enough and understand enough some of the complexities of, right, of how do we, how do we overcome whatever stumbling block, some of them we talked about, uh, at the last meeting, you know, you've got, you put an inclusionary zone in place for ten units or more, well, now, I got developers coming in that wanna put in, what really would be a small development, they don't know anything about affordable housing, how do I, how do I even navigate a system that you're mandating I now participate in, or I've gotta write a check for the fee in lieu? So, um, so they, you know, that's part of what, okay, we gotta, we did part one, we got, made them do the plan, but now we've gotta help with the implementation, so, it's nice to at least have other sounding boards and other, uh, folks in on those calls, so, some other people doing some research a little bit, pulling some things together. But, uh, yeah, the Cog has their hands full, 'cause there's a lot of stuff that we've asked for, the, you know, the municipalities as a whole, it's like, so some of them, Avon and Canton, that already have things in place, they're, uh, in different, you know, some inclusionary zoning, or overlay zone, or whatever, they can't get the developer, the developers don't wanna work, they can't get anybody to take advantage of the inclusionary zone that they have in place. They'd like to increase their, they'd like to increase the, the percent of affordable housing, but they're, they've got something in place, but they're not getting anybody interested, so it's the same kinda thing, right? It's like, okay, well, we're gonna put something in, we're gonna take the time to do it, then it's gotta make sense, right, and be.
Yeah, the whole unintended, unintended consequence.
We don't want unintended consequence, right, um.
Right, you know, that whole.
Well, I, I had one, but that brings you to other end, light touch, right? Where that's essentially how I read it, as increase, allowing increased density in certain zones in town, without requiring inclusionary zoning, right by right, so this is zoned, instead of R forty, it's now R twenty, or whatever math, right? And it, that's my, when reading through the light touches.
Yeah.
Right, is there more multifamily units within an area, so a developer can come in naturally, or via the market, and say, okay, I'm, I'm, now I can build twenty units instead of ten, so it's more economically viable for me. Um, and, you know, and that's, you know, I guess that's what we do all the time in, in town, but, um.
Well, there's a ne- so there's a neighborhood in, I think it was New Jersey, um, as part of that, uh, study, and they allowed duplexes by right.
Right.
Like I wanna say, across the board.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about that.
Across the board, um, so that's something that we could, you know, right now, I think they're allowed by special permit, um, in R nine, and R twelve, do we change that to by right in R nine and R twelve? I don't even know if we have any vacancies in R nine and R twelve, like, if there's even any vacancies.
Right, 'cause, as I, we're thinking about the, the, I think the Little A Affordable, increasing the number of units in town, but it's hard, right?
'Cause only have one, it's not like there's a lot of open farmland that they're gonna convert to a huge housing development, like, that is, you know, so that's tough from our perspective on what to do, right, so, um.
And we can, we could even, you know, take a look at, at pushing that to the R twenty, or R twenty zone, I don't know if we're gonna do R thirty for duplexes, perhaps leave them as special permit in R twenty and R thirty by right and R nine.
No, but some of it might be retrofitting an existing house.
Right, some of the older homes.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, some of the older homes, definitely.
Unionville Center, right, we heard of it before, but there were duplexes, and they became single, vice versa, right?
Correct, you, you have, uh, activated.
Right.
Last year, on, you know, on Main Street in Unionville, that was a single-family converting to a two-family.
Yep.
Which was just putting up a wall, 'cause the way that, the built the houses though.
Right.
Um, the only thing with the light touches, I think that'd probably be a good question for the developer panel, if you can get a resident developer, because it's not like it cuts your cost in half to build a townhouse versus a single family, if it, it's finding out what's it.
Right, there's, there's two kitchens, there's two.
Yeah, no, no, no.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not saying, like, your cost per unit is cut in half, but I know it's not, you would like to think that.
Right.
Oh, it's just one concrete pour, it's, it's all. Oh, it's just one concrete pore, it's, it's all one, no, it's cause you gotta add in the fire protection and everything like that, that there's prob- there's, I think there's supposed to be some cost, there's theoretically some cost savings that.
On the land, right, the land, the land, the bringing the utilities in, right, so.
Yeah, and there's the special permit versus that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Um, just, just on, I was thinking, I saw the, I don't know if anyone saw the article in the Current this week about affordability and, um, renters and evictions, so I was wondering if we had. Eviction data, or is that more a state of Connecticut thing, where looking at eviction rates in town, and, um, again, thinking about our sort of, our need, right? And, and, um, and then too, if any affordable housing trust funds have sort of renters assistance, right, to not only help the renters, but to help the landlords, cause the eviction process is really expensive to go through, and finding new tenants is not, is time.
The fee, the fee is not.
It's gonna be a skewed number to start COVID to make a victory.
Right, so I know, obviously during COVID, there wasn't, but now that we're post the eviction moratorium, it'd be interesting to see that, and then interesting to see, if we do have this trust fund, that and allowable use, or how to think through that, um.
Yeah, that one's kinda.
Yeah, I think.
No, that was just an open-ended.
Always, that's, I find that to be, there's always two, two sides to the story, and somewhere in the middle is the truth, with a lot of those things, that it might be a real difficult thing for us to insert into, unless there's a clear. Unless it's really clear, the situation's really clear and there's no murkiness.
Yeah.
It is. I don't know that that happens regularly.
No, I think the implementation of it certainly would be a challenge, but, um.
There is, you know, the Farmington Community Trust, that has, I know, years ago when I was on the board.
Nonprofit.
It's nonprofit, it collects money, I know we were involved in helping with, um, fuel assistance, um, the fuel bank, and some of those things, and I don't know if within the social service network, there is.
Yeah.
A, a rent assistance type program, I, I just, I understand, but I think that gets you into a really funky place, as you say.
Well, we, we do provide.
So murky, right, you know.
We do provide food assistance, and we provide fuel assistance.
Mm-hmm.
Do we provide shel- shelter assistance, right, and I think that's why I'm kinda all here, talking about shelter assistance ultimately, right? So, I, just something to bring to the group.
Yeah, I can, I, yeah, that's a Nancy question, I can find out about the eviction.
No, and then you, you get into the legality of, do we wanna get involved in the eviction process, is that our spot? I don't think that is.
Well, and I don't know, I don't know how much even the housing authority does, so I can have a chat with her and find out, get a little more info, um, just to see how far we can dip our toes into that, or if it's just, again, not something that, I, I mean, if it's not even something that they get involved in, then I don't think, cause then I think we're really, we're now like too, too. Right, it's too far, um.
I know there's a lot that goes into it, like, you know, if you evict, you, the owner has to store their property for so long, and if they don't claim it, then it's abandoned, and he can get rid of it, but he's the one that's on the hook for that.
Sure.
You know, so it, it, it can get.
It's, it's complex, um, so, but, uh.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting.
What you're saying, yeah, but you're saying.
Out of the eviction process, I was trying to help.
To, to get in before then, yeah, prior to avoid, yeah, and if it's, maybe it's a gap, you know, if it's something, hey, I'm between jobs, or whatever, and that's a gap, but under, I, I get what you're saying, um, I can chat with Nancy and see if that's something.
To explore.
Good.
And see how much information she has on, on that, with respect to that, um, but, yeah, we can look into it.
Your question kind of reminded me of my search again, right, my crazy search of, uh, it reminded me, so I went to Buckley High School, my freshman year, and there were like three high schools in Hartford, now there are over a hundred, and, uh, there's so many nonprofit organizations. Help with Evictions, I actually tapped into one for a tenant of mine in Plainville, um, she has cancer, so she's working with two of them, they have grants, and they're gonna cover her rent for a little while, but it's, there's so much out there, I'm like, who, I, I thought I was on a Connecticut, whatever, state website, no, not anymore. But, uh, I guess it's good, that there are companies that wanna help out, help people, but, uh, it's very murky, you know? Because there are a lot of hands in the pot, they're all trying to solve the housing needs and whatever needs, but, I'm just making a comment, that's all.
Yeah, I'll get some info from Nancy, and, um.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, cause didn't New Haven start out their own tenants' union?
You know, we have, obviously, the Fair Credit Commission here in, in town, right, which we, which we talked about, but that's more of a, the rates and the increases.
Our, and our housing authority does, does that, yep, yep, so, um, okay, so we have some things to follow up on.
Yeah, next meeting is Wednesday.
Next meeting is next Wednesday for work session, right, so we have Monday, Monday night on, uh, Monday night is busy. So the rest of. Next Monday, next Wednesday, and then that's the last work session, we're kind of on hiatus until August, so, um, I'll get a due to poll out, we'll follow up on, um, for the developers, uh, panel, and then I'll follow up, trying to get some folks in on that. We'll get some additional information on linkage fees, I'll check the, with Bob D, the legality of that linkage fee, and getting it added in on building permits, um.
Question about building permits, if we increased fees, that would go to public hearing, town council vote, it wouldn't have to go to a referendum, correct? Okay, I didn't think so.
Modification of the town ordinance.
I'm happy to, uh, public hearing for a recommendation we give to town council for the fee.
Don't have to, but we can.
Okay, that's fine. Um, maybe we should, but I'm just curious, so.
We don't have to, cause it's a recommendation, um, don't have to, but we can.
Right, to be transparent and be, you know.
Part of it too, unfortunately, is with fees, because it's short of putting a sign out in front of town hall, um. It's tough, it's tough with a regulation change for a hearing, right, because it gets noticed in the newspaper, and it gets noticed on the website, but there's no, we're not doing a direct mailing, right? So that was part of, hey, we put this in the newsletter, so folks are aware that we're talking about affordable housing, and we're having work sessions. I wanna say I've received to- maybe two or three emails or calls.
And do we have?
That's it, so.
Someone on line today?
Uh, there is, she's, um, John Galvin.
Oh, okay, it's just, just that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, I think Everbridge is a really underutilized.
Absolutely.
Something we have in town.
Absolutely.
So that mostly sends just like the PDF of the agendas, right? Does it send like public meeting notices, is there, is there a way to, like, I think there's a way to expand that, I mean, you, you gotta get people to sign up, I get it, but it's just a nice way.
The idea is that with the agenda going out.
Yeah.
Then, it has the information.
Yeah.
And it has the link, then, so it, it has the link, and then if there's still something, I was like, all right, this isn't making sense, and it's just two streets over, you pick up the phone and you call, and you get one of the four of us.
Right.
So, I, yeah, it's that balance between also not wanting to, like, just an end date, so the process has been to send the agenda, and now the agendas have the links.
Yeah, no, that's true.
But I, yeah, the percentage of people signed up, I wonder what it is, cause I, even in my own, like, household, my in-laws, and they're like, what is that?
Yeah, cause I think most people think it's for emergency.
I got, I got the notification, the road is gonna be closed at six o'clock.
The road closes, everything else, the folks are, I'm like, how do you not know?
Cause it's more informational too, it's not just emergency.
It's on the, um, it's in the newsletters on a regular basis.
Everbridge.
Yeah, like how to sign up, where to follow, we still get, folks have no idea, so. But it absolutely is, yeah.
When you guys start door hocking, when you're campaigning.
There you go, have your little Everbridge buttons with you, there you go.
Bring them up, bring your items.
QR code onto business cards.
There you go, right?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
Code, have them right away, sign up.
Just laminate a couple of them, there you go.
Well, right, I mean, I'm completely serious, you print it out, get it laminated, and then have it, and said, oh, dear, are you familiar with this?
Well, and it's frustrating for us too, because they have people say, right, they didn't, they didn't know, they had no idea.
Sneaking by, something.
And that's frustrating, right?
Let's go back six months.
A lot about it after the fact. So, anyhow, all right, so we have some action items, we understand our schedule for next week.
Yeah.
We're all good, we'll adjourn, officially adjourn. All right.